I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, August 25th, 2025, and the time is 6:00 P. M. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file. Will you update us?
Yes, we have several items in the table file this evening. Appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, a leave of absence, and some resignations.
Thank you very much. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Okay, moved by Jen, is there a second? Amy, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Kelly, do we have anybody signed up for public comment? Okay, that was item three. Item four is our announcements and recognitions. Do you have anything, Dr. Hillman, to share?
We just have one this evening. The Minnesota Star Tribune recently published a list of the most notable high school athletes who competed between 2000 and 2025. So, the last 25 years of the best high school athletes in Minnesota. And our own Northfield Raider Bailey Dupay, who was the class of 2015, was on that list for her contributions to both diving and gymnastics. And so, we just know of the legendary career that Bailey had here at Northfield High School. So pleased to see that recognition on really an auspicious list that includes lots of professional athletes, and Bailey certainly deserves to be among them. So, congratulations to Bailey on your career continuing to have legacy.
Board members, do you have any announcements or recognitions? Okay, we'll move on to item five, which is items for discussion and reports. Our first item is the Northfield Community Education Improvement Showcase. Director of Community Education Erin Bailey will provide the board with an overview of the N C E C successes and highlights for academic year 2425 and the focus areas for this upcoming school year. Welcome, Erin.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Thanks for having me here tonight to share the school improvement plan for the Northfield Community Education Center. As always, we start with the strategic plan and the vision. What is kind of exciting coming off the first day of Workshop Week is we've got to spend time having all of the staff back in the building. As you know, the N C E C has some staff that are with us year round, but of course, today we welcomed everybody back to the building. And what is exciting is when is the opportunity to get to revisit each year at this time, the strategic plan and the vision, which comes up frequently throughout the year, but to really re-highlight that and see how it still resonates with the staff in the building. And then also, of course, what we're sharing is how those, the work that we're doing ties to the strategic commitments. And so, you will see, not only in the narrative part, which benchmarks that aligns to, but I think you can also easily make the connections to what strategic commitments that aligns to as well. And as I just mentioned, those benchmarks, of course, are highlighted in there, and there's a number of them in for the Northfield Community Education Center that relate to those early childhood years, but that you'll also see ones that do support students throughout their educational career, and then that the Community Education Department, of course, always has the goal of providing those relevant and accessible learning opportunities for all residents. So, as we get started here, we'll, throughout this, I'll share some of the stories that go with that and where our goals are for the N C E C this year, while and how those align with the district's strategic plan. So, as we get for, get started, first, I want to share a few highlights from this last year. And of course, this is the brochure cover for our current fall brochure, and hopefully it is all sitting in your households right now. We'll dive into these highlights, but just to give an overview, first, children leave the Northfield Community Education Center prepared for kindergarten, and we'll talk about, highlight two of the program areas specifically in there. This happens while the N C E C is serving a diverse population, not only in our early childhood programming, but also in our adult basic education programming. You will also see that parents report satisfaction with their children's educational experience, and of course, the role that the partnerships serve in meeting the needs of students, families, and staff at the N C E C and truly on the north end of Northfield as well. So, as you can see, our highlight number one was that children leave the N C E C prepared for kindergarten. And so, here you can specifically see in these graphs, our Early Ventures Program and our Hand-in-Hand Preschool Program, and how those compared to the rest of the Northfield Public Schools incoming kindergarten class for last fall. And the reason we used the Fast Bridge Assessment was that last year looked a little bit different for how we did assessments in both Early Ventures and in Hand-in-Hand Preschool. So, in Early Ventures in previous years, we used the PELI Assessment, which was administered by a Reading Corps member. It's a nationally-normed assessment, and we did not have a Reading Corps member last year, so thus did not have access to that assessment in Early Ventures. And then in Hand-in-Hand Preschool, we actually used two different assessments last year, which is not ideal, but as you know, we were awarded voluntary pre-K slots in the summer of last year. Voluntary pre-K slots come with a choice of four assessments, and we had, up until that time, been using one of our own M D E-approved assessments in Hand-in-Hand Preschool. So, last year, because of the transition time, we had the classrooms that were voluntary pre-K classrooms using the T S Gold or the Teaching Strategies Gold Assessment, which was one of the options, and then the other classrooms stayed with their current, the current M D E-approved assessment that we've been using. So, to be able to have some data that was comparable, we did use the Fast Bridge Assessment, and you will see in the, in later slides what we will be doing this upcoming year. But that assessment is administered in the first month of kindergarten, and so you can see how students fared on that assessment. And to be able to have the number of low-risk or some-risk students, especially when you're looking at Hand-in-Hand Preschool, which has a very diverse population, last year of those 180 students, just over 44% were receiving a scholarship, 36% were students of color, and 36% were special education students. And so, love to see the outcomes we're seeing when we are supporting students from a very diverse background as they're entering the N C E C as well. And then I just had in the narrative, just for you to, just to reflect on our adult basic education population right now, just so that you have an awareness of who is making up that as well. Last year, we did have 189 students who spoke 15 different languages and represented 24 different countries. We also, a highlight from last year was that parents reporting satisfaction with their children's educational experience. What I'm really excited is this is, this is a three-year-in-a-row trend at the Northfield Community Education Center to receive very high and very stable ratings from family, from families who are participating in the Student Edu-, Student or Education Parent Satisfaction Survey. So, as you can see on that graph that's included in the PowerPoint and, or in the presentation and in the narrative, families continue to feel comfortable and welcome at the N C E C. And then the last highlight I'd like to share is just how partnerships strengthen the N C E C programs. The picture on the left is the food shelf at the, the Northfield Community Education Center. It is not a very big space and yet pushes out an immense amount of food on an annual basis. So, in the narrative, I did share with you the number of families that were served and the fact that just over 47,000 pounds of food was distributed from that site last year. And it also talked about just some of the changes that were implemented by the Community Action Center. So, if you were comparing this report that I did a year ago and the report that I did this time, you would see these numbers are actually down a little bit, and that is really due to the, the Community Action Center having a change from weekly access to food shelves to every other week for their clients at the beginning of this time period. So, that's really the reason you saw a change if you were comparing year to year. So, last year, it actually meant we distributed about 80,000 pounds of food out of this site, and now we don't have clients that can come as frequently. And this is really due to the C A C having more expenses for food and also more trouble sourcing food at this point. And so, they continue to monitor that, and if things change, we will be able to serve people more frequently at, at the N C E C site. They do tell me that what is happening is on trend for all of their sites that they serve. We also included the Early Childhood Navigator data. This is the H C I staff that is housed at the Northfield Community Education Center. They also worked with 100 children ages six and younger from 90 different families and had just over 3,000 contacts with those families, and their data was very similar to last year. And then I've also highlighted up here some of the other partnerships that happen through work that some of it is tied to the Community Education Center and some of it is tied to the other buildings. But the, this reflects, this diagram helps reflect what is happening in the partnerships that take place in our Northfield Community School site. So, this would include all of our elementary sites and the middle school. And so, as you can see, we partner on dental clinics and sports physicals. We partner at the elementary sites to also having access to early childhood education and childcare. We do bring in food access and other services, and so just helping to, a graph to provide what those look like. And then, of course, by participating in our adult basic education programs, you are also getting access, getting connections to those partnerships as well, as our A B E staff are very familiar with other resources in the community to connect them. We continue to see large increase both in participation and student contact hours in adult basic education, and so those numbers are reflected in there, and the year-over-year growth continues to be just a dramatic increase. The A B E federal funding had been paused at the end of July, and those funds have been released. So, A B E funding continues to move forward as what we were expecting this last year. And on an exciting note, which you are aware of too, we did receive a grant, the Multi-Purpose Community Facility Projects Grant, that will allow us to remodel the A B E space next summer. That space was largely untouched when we did the remodel in 2020. So, then as we move forward to the goals we have for this upcoming year, one of the wishes for the, the staff at the N C E C, as we talk about this in the spring before people head out to their summer adventures, is what they, you know, what goals that we want to see and what, how do we want to meet them? And I think one of the most exciting things that N C E C staff, which are diverse, say is they all want to be able to see themselves in the school improvement plan. And so, that is why you see this, these goals by program area. It's the ability for the number of program areas that we serve in the building to be able to see themselves reflected in those, in those academic goals. A little bit of understanding for the adult basic education goals. This is a Minnesota Department of Education set target, and they, they set this target around showing measurable skill gains. And basically, we are, they are wanting to know, did the students score higher on the post-test, which can be given after 40 hours of instruction, than they did on the pre-test, which is given when they entered the program? So, as you can imagine, not everyone stays with the adult basic education program for 40 hours of, of instruction. For example, when we gave the driver's education classes through adult basic education in Spanish last year, most of those students did not stay with the program because they were really interested in wanting to learn driver's education, and not, they were not there for necessarily adult basic education. That is why the number is lower, because you're not, it is unrealistic to think you might have 80% of students to complete those tests or, and make a level gain, because truthfully, you're not going to have that many students necessarily that would be in there for that amount of instruction, because that is not what their, what their needs are. So, that is just a little bit to help understand how we came up with 36.7%, which is very specific, but the Minnesota Department of Education helps set those. There is then, those, those staff will continue to work on their professional development in a, in a number of ways to help students meet those goals. And then they've also, the staff have already participated in training last week that is held annually in August. The birth-to-age five and service providers, so our birth-to-age-five staff are special education staff who are involved both in home visits and community visits that happen outside of the Northfield Community Education Center. So, they are serving students throughout the community wherever their placements might be. So, whether that is another preschool or childcare center, or whether that would be in the home. So, this, and then the service providers are the physical therapists, the occupational therapists, and others who provide services on, on students with their I E Ps. So, that team is working towards 80% of their students receiving special education services, meeting their goals on, meeting 80%, excuse me, of students receiving special education students will achieve all of their I E P goals. And then, as you can see in the next, the next three groups, that being E C F E, Early Ventures, and Hand-in-Hand Preschool, we are, our goal is to have 100% of students show growth, and 80% of those students will meet either the class goal or be proficient. And this is where you can see we will now use, because we will have students in Hand-in-Hand Preschool, will all be using the Teaching Strategies Gold Assessment, and in Early Ventures, we will use the Mother Goose Assessment, which is a parent-aware assessment as well. And then in E C F E, just so you're aware, in E C F E, both the parent and the student are considered students of the program. And so, we will be measuring goals for both of them, and that is because those are both considered, who are the students in the program. And then in our employee, our second goal around employees will be that they will report satisfaction in the workplace. And we are really going to focus on one area, which is the question around, I will receive positive, I receive feedback concerning areas for improving my performance, and we're looking to increase that score from a 3.67 to a 3.8. And ways that we will be doing that is rounding conversations will be offered in October and April. That's an opportunity for staff to have a one-on-one conversation with myself about how things are going for them in their workplace. And then we will continue, we have regular weekly staff shout-outs in the building, and we also have several built-in building-wide awards recognitions, and so continuing to acknowledge the good work that's, employees are doing in the building. And then lastly, myself and community ed program coordinators, who also overs, help oversee and provide evaluation for a lot of staff in the building, will make sure to provide very direct feedback to staff and individuals in their individual meetings and/or in their group meetings, and really being clear about what the feedback is, because not everyone in these, in these programs are necessarily having an evaluation that's taking place on an annual basis, because they are not also teach, all necessarily teaching staff either. And then finally, our third goal is to have parents and caregivers report satisfaction with their children's educational experience. And our goal here is really to maintain the scores that we have had over the last three years with, while increasing the number of parents that are completing that survey. We have, we have made significant growth over the last few years about the number of students that, or parents that have completed that survey, and we're kind of in a unique position where we interact with parents every single day. And so, we, I think, want to keep encouraging parents to, to give us feedback on that survey, even though we've probably had three conversations in the week already with them. So, we're going to continue to provide a great environment for their children and while also encouraging them to, even more to fill out that survey. And we will do this, we will continue to have parents receiving positive feedback throughout the year. We have built-in schedules for how that will happen. It also happens very frequently beyond those schedules. We also have regular weekly communication and monthly newsletters sent out in the early learning program areas. And then we will host five events throughout the school year for families to attend. And so, these are events, many of them meant for the students in the building, but also meant for the wider community too, and so that they have the chance to, to experience the Community Education Center, see what programs are offered there, learn about the district, especially if they have young children. So, that will actually start on the 12th of September with Truck and Tractor Night, which you're all invited to if you would like to attend as well. So, with that, I thank you for your support of the Northfield Community Education Center and the work that's happening there, and I would happily take any questions.
Thank you for your report, Erin, and I have to say first, I love Truck and Tractor Night. I, I miss actually having a little kid to go with, so I might have to borrow some.
I'm sure there'll be some around if you want to help watch some children.
So, I have a couple of questions for you. About the employee engagement survey, I know your umbrella covers many, many employees. I mean, isn't it like 300 employees or, you know, once you add, so who, how do you define who gets the employee engagement survey? And, you know, and maybe that's part of the reason why your numbers are a little lower than you thought, because if, I just want you to talk more.
Yes, that's great. So, the employee engagement survey is given, I'm going to call this to our, our regular employees. So, take out those, so the ones that are with us on a, either school-year basis or year-round basis. So, if you're thinking of our department, we have a lot of part-time staff that work in the recreation program, for example. They are not giving feedback in that employee engagement survey. We have other surveys that we survey them for and ask them to give their feedback. Partly, some of the breadth of the survey questions may, may be hard for them to answer. They, some of them probably, other than coming to H R orientation, might not have actually stepped into a building, because they're on a field or at the pool or in areas where it would be harder for them to answer that employee engagement survey. So, they are, they're completing surveys about how their work experience was that is not the employee engagement survey. And then our staff that are in our building, licensed teachers, E As, childcare staff, they are completing the, the employee engagement survey. So, for our building, that's about 85 staff that would complete the employee engagement survey.
Does that help? Yes, that helps a lot. Then I have a, a question from slide 10. It's about the I E P goals. You say 80% of the special ed students would meet all of their I E P goals. Does that mean that 100% would meet some of their I E P goals, or why, what am I missing?
Yeah, that's a great, I should have put the, in the same way that I wrote the other one. So, 100% will show growth, so the 100% will be working to achieve their I E P goals. 80% would be meeting all of their I E P goals, and that is again about this, you know, how are we putting them on track to be proficient in kindergarten? And so, by meeting, as, the more of those goals that you're meeting, the more on track you would be to be proficient when you reach kindergarten entrance as well.
Thank you very much.
And Erin, follow up on Amy's question. Some of the I E P goals potentially, I would think, roll over to the next year, and so that would be a case why it was not met.
Correct. So, we, you know, we start some of our special education services shortly after birth. And so, yes, so some of these goals are going to be, continue to roll forward as students grow and develop.
Thanks, Claudia. I have a question about the parent survey.
Yeah.
Would, are those including parents from both Hand-in-Hand and Early Ventures?
Yes. Yep, that would be including any parent in our building. So, it could, that would be parents of early, early childhood family education, Early Ventures and Hand-in-Hand.
Okay. And then what, what would be the percentage of the parents that completed the most recent survey?
So, if you, so you're saying if there's 63 in there, so if we have, I'll do quick math for you. So, we have approximately kind of 300 families in our building. So, does that help with what you're asking? And we've had 63 completed last year.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
And I will say, it, we do some, we've tried to do a little bit of pushing of this. I think, again, where we have, where we have families who we talk to every day, I think they feel like they're giving us their feedback every day. So, we're trying to make sure that we get this in a form to, that helps us have data in an anonymous way and allows them to provide comments too.
How, how is it anonymous?
So, this is a survey that's emailed to you, and parents don't have to provide a name versus when you're picking up your child and you give us some feedback, but we clearly know who the feedback's coming from.
Okay, so it's, so all of your results are derived from email only?
So, this survey is filled out online. This is a survey that gets emailed out to families to complete.
So, they would click on the link?
Yep.
And then it would take them to a special other page?
Yep, they're going to choose, select the N C, they're going to do this, it's the same way that they would fill it out for any of the elementary or middle school or high school. So, they're going to select the N C E C and then complete the same survey. It's the same questions that are asked at all building levels.
Okay. Was, has there ever been a written survey conducted versus mine?
For, in our, so we do a lot of surveying. I will, you know, like if you take any sort of classes, we, we follow up almost every class that we have through community education with a survey. There would be, E C F E does have some opportunities for some written feedback in that class in the parent education course. And then in adult basic education, we do a little bit of different surveying there because, just because, as I mentioned, the number of languages that are included and represented in adult basic education, we do a little bit of how we survey there looks a little bit different too, but this survey specifically is given online.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Erin, nice to see you. Two funding questions for you. One's related to the Multi-Purpose Community Facility Projects Grant for the A B E construction. So, my understanding is that's the state grant that was federal money, is that correct?
Correct.
Do we have the money in hand yet?
We have a signed grant agreement, and so are able to start spending money in that grant account. Most of that work will be done next summer, just because the remodeling, so we are working with World Construction to prepare the construction documents that need to go out, and there will be some bidding as part of that. And so, the goal is to go out for bids in November, December, but the work would start next summer, just so that it doesn't impact learning. That grant, the, the funds have to be expended by December 2026. So, we will, we are able to spend them now, Corey, but we don't have much to spend on right now. I am very comfortable, that one I'm very comfortable with where we're at right now.
Then the other one we're probably less comfortable about is the 21st Century Community Learning Grant.
Correct.
With August 31st being next week, what happens to programming if we don't have approval for the next six years?
Yeah, that's a great question. That's a great question too. So, that is where careful planning for the, whenever you have grants, right, they, they inevitably have an end date, and there's not always a guarantee that you're going to get continued funding. And so, this is where careful planning over the last several years has put us in a good spot. So, when we were able, part, we have blended, blended and graded a number of grants, both the grants that the Northfield Public Schools hosted and grants that other community partners have hosted as well. And then we are also in community school and middle school youth center programming students who are eligible for targeted services. We are able to claim those students, and the state does pay us for those, the hours that those students spend in programming. So, on the front side, nobody knows who's who in a program, and on the backside, we are keeping track of those students that meet targeted services qualifiers, and then we are able to be reimbursed from the state. And so, the state does now require us to keep those funds in its own fund balance to be moving forward. So, between the number of grants we would have and being able to code some, code students to targeted services and maintain that fund balance, we are, do still have funds available to keep programming moving forward. That's not to say we might not have to tweak a few things, but it does not have a, like a vastly large impact on programming.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Maggie?
Hi.
Hi.
I was hearing on the news a couple of weeks ago that the group of kindergarteners starting this fall were born during COVID 2020 or so. I'm just curious, you know, what you're seeing in the N C E C around children who maybe are set to go to kindergarten, you know, what, what kinds of programming, you know, was really helpful for them, or, you know, the kids that are now younger?
Yeah.
Are you seeing differences?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. Well, one, we're certainly, we have a lower population, like overall total population in the, in the N C E C this year. We are kind of at the bottom of birth rates that happened right after COVID, and that what, what we have been preparing for, obviously, to go into the elementaries and eventually the middle school is actually happening at the N C E C right now. And I think what we have, we have found, as, as we have the cohort that is likely, that is coming in now, but also the cohorts that we have most recently experienced that we have sent to kindergarten, they are a little, they're less used to being in group settings, and so they haven't spent as, you know, they were less likely to have had as many experiences outside the home prior to coming to either a preschool or a childcare setting. And so, some of those things that were picked up along the way, are you being a little bit used to having a, you know, a larger number of kids around you at one spot, because you may have been at story hour, even the grocery store? That's probably one of the biggest things, is just children who are a little bit used to being in a setting that's outside their home. So, one, being away from their parents for a little bit longer of time, or a very familiar caregiver. And then, you know, two, just kind of what are the, the interactions like in that sort of setting as well?
Thank you. And I have one more question, which is, I presume that the students who are in the N C E C don't all head to a Northfield Public School for kindergarten, but can you talk a little bit about kind of how you introduce or tell parents and families about our kindergarten in the public schools?
Absolutely. You are correct. Not everybody does, but we try to prep them for kindergarten in Northfield Public Schools when they first come to Baby Talk, when they might be a week old. And so, anyone who has delivered at the Northfield Public Schools does get a, they originally, in their packet, in their exit packet, they do get information about Baby Talk. And so, we've invited them there. And so, we have actually great data about the number of people who come to Baby Talk that do actually matriculate into the Northfield Public Schools, and those that, you know, they actually don't, they might live in Farmington, and that was probably never their plan, but they did attend Baby Talk. In addition, Dr. Hillman does send a, a card to every one, a baby who's born in, at the Northfield Hospital that would also be living in the Northfield Public Schools. that would also be living in the Northfield Public Schools. So we, we start early with the, the reach out from the district to just say, you're welcome here. We would love to have you here. And that said, because we are operating a childcare center and a preschool, we do have families that maybe work in Northfield but aren't necessarily living here. And so we do have kids that will not, that don't attend kindergarten here. But we, as we get closer, we do, through the preschool and childcare, we start to send home information about the open houses that happen for kindergarten and students and how you would get linked, more information. We get you, you know, all the services that you'll get connected to and things like that as well. We also see because of those outreaches, people that if they've come to childcare or they've come to preschool here, and even if they don't live here, they've now built a relationship with the district and it has increased their likelihood to then enroll in Northfield Public Schools too.
Okay, anyone else? Question? Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry Ben, go ahead.
All right. Thank you Erin, good as always. And it's always impressive to look at the portfolio that N C E C has to maintain and manage. So kudos to you on that.
Thank you.
So the question around the adult basic education is that's gone up year over year. What's, like what content or class type really has driven that? Or is that across the board? What does that look like?
Yeah, that's a great question. So our large, we, and many kudos to Clarice Graybough, who is our adult basic education manager. We, it's a little bit of a combination. So we have seen an increase, especially in our morning classroom classes. And so these attendees at the morning class, it's a combination of a little bit older adults, but then also adults who are working in a later shift job. And so they are coming, working on their English language skills and then they are often going to work in a second or third shift job as well. So that, that class has been, has increased quite a bit. And then we've also added some of our offerings as well. So in addition to the adult, the driver's education in Spanish class, we also just started doing GED testing in Northfield, which this has, while being a great service for this area, but it also shows that if I, there is a way to make this a full circle in Northfield, right? So I can, if those are the skills I'm working on in adult basic education, I now have an end game too that I can, I can see right in my own classroom too that I can go there and take testing to. And so those, and then we've also added summer sessions when we, so funding, because the way that adult day basic education funding is your funding for the next year is based on your previous year's contact hours. And so because we've had an increase in contact hours, we've had enough funding to offer classes in June as well. And so that has also, being able to offer classes closer to year round is often interesting and beneficial for adults as well.
Thank you. One, in terms of the food shelf usage that you mentioned, have we seen any sort of change in that since July with the passage of the significant cuts to some of those kind of benefits?
Yeah.
From Washington?
Yeah. So the, probably the biggest change I noticed is some, you know, we always have a line waiting for the food shelf on Thursdays. So starting at, the food shelf opens at three. Starting at about twelve-thirty, there are people lined up. Partly, I think there's some community that's happening right there with people that are frequently visiting with each other and we have a space for them to gather. But the group is not quite as big. And I think partly that's because of the every other week model that the community action centers had to go to, go through. And I think that relates to where you're talking about your cuts, is the cuts have driven how frequently they can allow people to come. So while we still have people waiting every week, it's not quite as many people waiting there every week.
So kind of a function of availability?
Yep. Yep, exactly.
And then do you, any updates? I know you talked to the board earlier this spring about early ventures.
Yeah, that's a.
What that looks like.
Yeah.
Any updates there that you'd wanna highlight in terms of enrollment or kind of how that's aligned?
Yeah. Those are great questions. Yep. So for, in regards to enrollment, when we opened enrollment this spring and it continues to this day, we could add a second infant and toddler room. So we still have like waitlist double whether our capacity is in those two spaces. And for the first time in the twelve years I've been the director, we have an, we have openings in our year before kindergarten and this is really, you are seeing what's happening right now in low, low birth rates. And so part of what you see happening a little bit is we have more options in the, in, within the building the year before kindergarten. So we have, we have some students who have been with us at early ventures who qualify for voluntary pre-K, which is a no cost option, right? And so you are gonna make that change likely because you can still have the continuum of care for the day. So we are, you know, it's great. We have lots of options and families can choose the option that works best for them. It causes a little shifting in that last year before kindergarten. And, you know, we're also seeing a lower number of students just in our building for this upcoming year. All that said, it has not gotten any cheaper to run a childcare center. So it's, we still are dealing with costs that exceed what we are taking in, in revenue from childcare fees. And so myself, our ventures coordinator and Val have met already. We met in July just to start putting forth, and we will be recommending some changes here that would start, that we would be putting out to families, you know, before January because they will start registering in March. And so they can make a choice for those that would, what those impacts would be for them for the next year.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you Erin.
Thank you.
Right, next we have Spring Creek Elementary School Improvement Showcase. Tanya Will, our Spring Creek principal, will provide the board with an overview of the school's successes and highlights for last academic year and focus areas for this academic year. Welcome.
All right. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. It's really my pleasure to come here to share this, the Spring Creek Elementary School Improvement Plan. And I'm really here representing the work of the wonderful staff and families and students that I'm really honored to serve. It's been really, a really a fun year. As I look at all of the different things that we've talked about and worked towards, I'm thrilled to be here tonight. So thank you. As Erin pointed out, we always are starting with our vision from the strategic plan. And I was just, I was reflecting on just how appreciative I am of the work that got to this plan right here because it really anchors in everything that we do. When we talk about anything, we're talking about every student. We're talking about critical thinkers. We're talking about being curious and ready to engage. And those are all really what education's all about. So it's great that our vision is outlining that and we have something to anchor in. Our strategic commitments also and our benchmarks help outline just where we're going and what we're about. Tonight in this presentation, I will be referring to most oftenly these strategic commitments, dealing with people, equity, learner outcomes and communication with the highlights and goals that I'll be talking about. And the district benchmarks that I'll most often also relate to are three, four, eight and nine, dealing with our achievement, well-being, employee and parent satisfaction. So this presentation will share some of the highlights from last year and we have set some goals for this year. And well, I'll try to kind of align this with the plan and point that out along the way. It's really exciting to talk about some of these things, especially coming off of a day with staff and seeing the excitement and anticipation that the staff has as they came back from a summer of rejuvenation and reflection. And now we kind of get to take off. And so with that, our twenty twenty-four, twenty-five highlights, we identified three focus areas. And those three focus areas were our Bridges Math Implementation. I know you've heard about that a bit, but I'll talk a bit more about that. Also the professional development of teachers, which was the science of reading training. And then at Spring Creek, we were looking a bit at our multi-tiered system of support and how that was, we could develop and strengthen the systems there just to make things run as smoothly as possible. And with that, I'm just really happy to report that all of these air, focus areas impacted our highlights. And I suppose that's really not too surprising that when a group of people team together around a purpose, that some, some great things can happen and we can make progress. So the positive impact that the work in these focus areas have had and continue to have on student learning, instructional strategies and community culture have laid the groundwork for, and, and kind of sparked some cycles of continuous improvement and that I'm gonna share with you now. So our first highlight will be the Bridges Math Implementation. And I just wanna give a little shout out to the Instructional Services Team who orchestrated a really well-supported implementation of the Bridges Math Curriculum. It included professional development, math walkthroughs, math lab days, and the strategies and approaches to instruction were not always within the comfort zone of all of our teachers, yet through teacher reflection and observations and guidance and support from our T N T P consultants and other staff, this made for a really successful implementation year. I have been through many implementations in my time here in Northfield Schools and this was really one of the best. There was a visible increase in student engagement, conceptual understanding and student discourse noticed across the district during these instructional observations. Teachers commented on the opportunities for students to enter into the learning because of our low floor, high ceiling approach that's prevalent throughout all of the lessons. And I just loved it because teachers really were creating the conditions for learning and students would enter in to just own the learning. And that was really a key mindset for everyone to be in. So if you note the tiny little graph there beside the kindergarteners, who by the way, are quite engaged in their Bridges Math Lesson that required them to work with two dimensional shapes to cover an area, share multiple solutions and have conversations about these multiple solutions. If you can take a look at that picture, that was a moment just walking into a class, snapping a photo, and they're all doing it. And they're, they all can do it because of the way things are, are, are presented. So the graph there is actually showing the overall district results. I just wanna point that out. You might not be able to see that word there, but since in the whole district, we're looking at what's happening with math of instruct, this is of instructional walkthrough observations. And so at the beginning of the year, the green area shows about sixty-four percent of the instruction across the district ranked in the good or strong area. And then the second graph, as the year progressed, moved to an overall eighty percent ranking in the good or strong area. That was just later in the year. Here we go. And now on this graph right here, also dealing with Bridges Math Implementation, specifically in the elementary schools, while implementing our new curriculum and receiving professional development around this, classrooms were observed regularly. And this graph is not specific to Spring Creek alone. It includes all elementary observation data, but T N T P guided us through instructional observations that were reflected in these four domains, which were the culture of learning, math content, instructional practice and student ownership. And there are several things to glean from this information here. For me, one of the biggest was the shift in awareness and the belief in the approach being used. You can see a decided increase in the culture of learning category. That is sort of our first big aha there. And there's also, you can see there's room for growth. I look at these four areas as sort of our pillars to springboard from as we increase our awareness and reframe our instruction and improve our response as we continue to grow in providing high quality instruction for every student. Teachers are excited to continue on this journey. In elementary, or elementary teachers were completely immersed in professional learning during the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This math implementation coupled with also the science of reading training that was occurring during PLCs has really set the stage for high quality instructional practices and responses. I'm looking forward to the collaboration that will occur around these areas as teams gather during their PLC teams time during this, this year to continue to engage in the curriculum-based professional development specific to their content areas. This is really pretty excited, exciting to have our PLC time to focus back on the things that we started last year and can continue with the collaboration feel of our, of the team. Highlight number two is positive school culture. And early in our, in the year, our M T S S school leadership team identified some areas of growth. We were just like, hey, what, what can we do here at Spring Creek to work on our culture a bit? And so we, we suggested a little bit of reflection around this, some research and work around our school culture and school-wide cohesiveness and ideas around the strengthening, sort of the belonging, belonging to Spring Creek as a staff member, belonging as a student, belonging as a parent or caregiver. It became a priority as we also were working to support attendance. We kind of saw these two going hand in hand, belonging and coming to school. So we worked together with our S E L team and site council to develop and refine plans to center around positive behaviors. Our positive behavior coach at Spring Creek is Rich Gugersberg. And the two of us researched or visited the other elementary schools to more clearly understand programs or protocols that were working at the other schools. And from here, we outlined a plan that we shared with the Spring Creek staff and we're gonna implement at the start of this school year. I'll talk about this a bit more in detail when I outline, because you can imagine this is one of our goals for this year as well. And I'll tell you more about that in a bit. But throughout last year, staff worked together to identify areas of improvement and made some strides in building a positive school community. And we could really feel that momentum going throughout the year. At the end of the year, when the surveys were out, our employee engagement survey indicated an increase in top two box results with an overall average result of seventy-eight point nine percent. And the top two box again is if they're agreeing or strongly agreeing in one of those two categories. And then we also had our parent caregiver satisfaction survey indicated an increase in top two box results with an overall average result of eighty-five point five seven percent. We liked those kinds of results. We liked the increase. And as our strategic commitments indicate, our people are really important because that's what really makes up a school. We wanna prioritize the engagement, satisfaction and support of every student, staff member and, or, and parent or caregiver. Our third highlight is, is around our inclusive playground planning. We all know the importance that play has in the lives of students. We wanted to ensure that every child would have access to the physical and social emotional benefits of engaging in play and interacting with peers. Our strategic commitment to equity and people ran strong throughout this process. It was great to plan together with multiple stakeholders to envision an optimal play space. So the playground committee members made initial recommendations. We had five large group meetings and several subgroup meetings and email exchanges to understand our space and possibilities. PTO meetings were utilized to gather additional parent feedback on the process and student voice preferences through activities in PE class. Throughout the process, there were multiple versions and three major revisions to the playground equipment and the layout. Equity was at the core of all discussions and decision-making, ensuring that every student has a fair opportunity to reach their full potential. The surface and equipment chosen allows every student access to the physical and social emotional benefits of engaging in play and interacting with peers. So we really appreciate the partnership with the PTO that supported this effort. It appears to be on track to be ready for the first day of school. The excitement is and anticipation is quite high, especially as a few wood chips got put down today on the surface. It was fun to see the pile of playground go from horizontal to vertical and see the large pile of plate, of wood chips kind of moving down. And we're, we're hopeful and that this will be completed by the first day of school. So now as we move into some goals for this next year, our first goal is, really addresses student achievement. This year, we have a district academic goal that aims for eighty percent of our students meeting grade level benchmarks in each subject area. As Erin also mentioned, we also have a hundred, we were hoping, we're aiming for a hundred percent of our students showing that growth. But when we talk about that achievement piece, we're looking at eighty percent. This graph indicates- This graph indicates that we do have some strides to take to meet this goal, and we're up for this challenge. These are the MCA results that indicate state, district, and Spring Creek results going from left to right there, and putting us at 62.8% of our Spring Creek students in grades three through five meeting or exceeding the standard in reading, and 69% of our Spring Creek students meeting or exceeding the standard in math. And while these numbers are above our district and state results, there are definitely steps to take to increase achievement levels toward that 80% goal. We are feeling great momentum with the implementation of the Bridges Math Curriculum and the knowledge gained with the Science of Reading trainings. I'm looking forward to the opportunities that are presented through the collaboration at PLC time to build on this knowledge base through that curriculum-based professional development that will strengthen our Tier One instruction, specifically supporting teachers as they move from a mechanical use of the curriculum to a more skillful use of that curriculum or a more skillful response. In year two will be key. We will continue to learn, to lean on our MTSS framework that has become more systemized and guidance from them as well. This includes the district leadership team, the school leadership team, the problem-solving team, interventionists, lead teachers, and specialized services. As always, classroom teachers will monitor and analyze the formative data and summative data in order to determine next steps within the classroom. And using their PLC teams' work to guide decisions, every teacher will be able to reflect and refine their instructional practices and delivery to respond to student needs and progress toward this goal. Our second goal is to implement a proactive, positive behavior system that we're calling Star Celebrations. We did the work, research, and planning throughout the year last year, and we're eager to provide a framework to promote the cohesiveness and belonging that was a priority while also celebrating students and their growth. So these photos here show some of the groundwork that was laid last year. In the top left, we have our enthusiasm and positivity onstage at an all-school meeting. The bottom right shows two staff members engaged in a sample activity that supports our first star word teamwork. If you had come to our staff meeting today, we also had several activities happening around teamwork, and we're excited to work together on these efforts. We also felt like it was important to hear student ideas about important characteristics toward belonging and being a Spring Creek star. Check out the short video clip. It's probably the best part of this whole presentation. Student voice is really important to knowing what our next steps are, and responding to that is part of the job of all of our staff. So moving ahead to our next goal. Oh, wait, I have more to say on that. Sorry, the kids kind of threw me on that one. The other part I should mention on this is, at the same time, we're also aiming to increase the employee engagements and survey response to the statement, "I see progress being made to create a culture of success for employees across the organization of those we serve." In the narrative, I had put that we are currently at 78.85% in the top-two-box, and we would just really like to see an increase to above 80% on that. In order to implement this, some steps we'll be taking is, the school-wide approach will introduce, practice, and celebrate positive behaviors and support the social-emotional well-being and academic success. We will, first of all, our Positive Behavior Coach, Rich Gugusberg, will lead monthly Star Celebrations for each grade level that focus on these key star words like teamwork. They'll be introduced each month. Staff meetings will include information around these words. The Spring Creek Update will have information for families. And teachers will continue their current practices of having that warm welcome. And we're going to focus a bit on something we're calling a Star Send-Off that will kind of wrap up the day together as well. Oh, we won't watch that again, but it was a nice one. Sorry about that. So our last goal here is that learning is a high priority. This one, while we clearly know that learning is at the core of all we do, I know we have room to grow in communicating information around learning. This one caught me a little bit by surprise because when I noticed some feedback around that from our parents' survey, I was surprised that it wasn't a little bit higher. And then, when I thought about it, it kind of made sense. In our parent and caregiver survey, the statement, "I believe that my child's learning is a high priority at this school," showed that Spring Creek was at a top-box score of 41%, which is slightly below the district top-box percentage of 44.8. Our aim is to improve this top-box score to match or exceed the district top-box score. In order to improve this rating and emphasize learning, we're going to consistently use our high-impact instructional strategies. We're also going to have teachers recap at the end of the day as part of their Star Send-Up, sort of have kids recap what their learning was for the day so that they can solidify that and maybe communicate that back to their parents and caregivers. Because sometimes the question is, what'd you do today? And the answer might be nothing because it was a while ago. You know, so just recapping that. A learning spotlight will be included in the Spring Creek Update newsletter. We're going to have learning highlights twice per week on our morning announcements. And then teachers will include learning highlights or updates in their classroom newsletters, as many have been doing. And we're going to try to, we will increase the number of family engagement events that spotlight learning as a priority. With that, on behalf of the Spring Creek Elementary, I'd like to thank the board for, oh, there we go. I'd like to thank the board for your support and decision-making that has a longstanding tradition of positively impacting students, staff, and families. And I am happy to field any questions.
Right, board members, do you have any questions at this time on this presentation? Maggie?
You mentioned in the Bridges Math, the phrase, "low-floor, high-ceiling." Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so one of the really cool approaches in Bridges Math is that they pose a situation to students and let it be entered into from many different angles, instead of the teacher showing the sequence of how it must be done. And because of that, kids can enter in at different points and just get into the learning. The low floor is, if you know this piece, then what else? And the high part could be, and if you know this, this, and this, what else? Where else can this take you? The things I've been observing have been so authentic that it just feels, it just, it just, what one student said to me, "This doesn't feel like math," which, okay, whatever. But it is, it's a great way for all students to be able to go into the work and be able to show what they know. I think one of the interesting parts, though, is that teachers are now in a spot where they've learned how to deliver the curriculum as it is, and really, our next step is then, if we're entering right here, then what is the teacher's response when a student enters here? What's that next question? And that's really where I would like our work to be focused this year. And I believe that that's what Ray has also been focusing on as well, so that we know what that next response would be. That's kind of moving from that mechanical use of it to being skillful responders to where students are at. Thank you.
Thanks, Tanya.
Yeah.
This might be a joint question for you and Matt, but when we look at that Tier One goal around the academic goal of 80% of students demonstrating academic proficiency, is that just tied to the MCAs? Is that kind of what we're looking at? And that, I'd be right to say that that doesn't touch on every grade. And obviously, that's three, five, seven, something. I don't have them all memorized, but in the absence of kind of every grade, are there other measures that we're considering as part of that as well?
Yeah, so you're right. In elementary schools, grades three, four, and five, their assessment results are primarily communicated through the MCA. We also try not to rely solely on one assessment in looking at student performance. So we have a number of other assessments. We have curriculum-based measurements that come with the high-quality instructional materials that we've purchased. We also use some screening tools. We've recently moved to FastBridge, which is a University of Minnesota screening product. So you're going to hear the 80% over and over again because what we are responding to is a longtime enemy, or a longtime enemy perfectionism, right? Or, on the other hand, these very, I think, very precise, we're going to move from 62.1% to 62.3%, but that's too technical. What we're trying to do with the approach to school improvement planning goals this year is create a mindset, right? That if we can achieve 80% of students, regardless of the measure, whether it be FastBridge, MCA, the content-based, curriculum-based measurements, if we could have that mindset that 80% of students are able to demonstrate grade-level proficiency in the year that they're in that grade, right? So the arbitrarily constructed grade levels that we have, the rest of our instructional systems, our support systems, can help the other 20% of students who aren't able to achieve that in that same grade get there, right? Because it's about that aspiration of every student being prepared for lifelong success, while also recognizing that students are different, and not every student is going to achieve or demonstrate the benchmark at the same time or in the same way. So what we have been doing, you could say, we're typically ranked pretty highly in many state measures, but it isn't good enough. And so what we need to do is do something different, right? We need to have a different mindset. And so the answer is on this piece, the MCA, right? But it is also on a number of other measurements. And what I really like about this approach is, let's just take it in elementary school, for example. The only places that we really have a true metric for is mathematics and reading, and you could argue, science, right? But what we have is now we have all of those other curricular areas that also are going to be able to establish what are their benchmarks? And are 80% of the students in my art class mastering benchmarks? And how do I report that? So we think it's more inclusive, and we think that it gets away from that perfectionism spirit that was really started by no child left behind and gets us to say, if we can get four out of five, eight out of 10 students each year, we have the other systems to help the students demonstrate that proficiency as they move forward. So I really appreciate the chance to do a little bit more explanation of this. We really think it's the mindset becomes the more important thing in a school improvement plan versus some of the technical pieces. The technical piece, well, I can't wait to see if we went from 61.3 to 67.2, or whatever it is, that very technical piece. But this is more of a mindset and a feeling and a rallying cry, if you will. Did I miss any of the assessments? I think I got them all.
I was going to add something, and then you got it. Okay, so.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. So we could expect to see
Lots of it.
More data in those spaces as this school progresses.
Absolutely.
I will add to that, though. I love that it's 80%, and it's also, and 100% of our students will show growth because we were there for that. And we can see that growth. And, you know, one of the hardest things is to see that growth, and then there's like just that half a hair right before meeting it. And then it's like, oh, yes or no. We're all showing growth, and we're going for that 80%.
Thanks, Tanya. So I first want to say, I love the idea of a daily recap before the students go home because I think that there's so many good things. Gets them thinking back and remembering, and it does give them a good answer for when they get home to the parents and they're asked, what did they do today? You know, so.
Yeah.
Great, I'm glad to hear you're doing that.
Thank you.
My question is about highlight number one, and it's on slide number seven. So it's a couple of things I just want to further explanations and your thoughts on. And it's two areas, and I'm just going to tell them both at the same time. The first, for high-quality math content, it's either yes or no. And we don't have the somewhat and mostly. And I'm wondering why there's no middle ground there. And my second question is under student ownership. Overall, it sort of improved, but we have less student ownership. It went down from 15 to 4% in the yes category. And I wanted to know what your thoughts on that are.
I'm so glad you asked. I almost was going to say it right at the beginning, and I thought, oh, it's too much to say right at the very beginning because there's a lot of conversation about this. First, to the high-quality math content, the yes/no had to do with, if in that 10-minute walkthrough, if the instruction that was occurring was specific to math and was going to be considered to be high-quality math content, math conversation, math, everything. On occasion, if you're doing a math activity that has to do with, maybe you're making gingerbread cookies and you're putting in different fractional amounts of things, on occasion during a math class, a teacher might read a book about gingerbread. Just that's a general, just setting the stage. And while that would be a great connection, it wouldn't be considered high math content because there wouldn't be math in it. So I am so proud of the elementary teachers who were all in in delivering this. And yet, at times, when we happened to walk through for those 10 minutes, there may have been some other things going on that maybe wouldn't have been considered high math content. And we were, and it was really just a yes or a no. At the moment, we were there, was it math or was it not? That's what that was about. So it doesn't give quite as much clarity. And then with the student ownership, there might have to be a little bit. This is what came out of the conversations, where that at the very beginning, as we're looking at student ownership and we're using these kinds of rubrics, it really is a shift in mindset of what instruction is and what good instruction is. And so on occasion, I believe that at the beginning of the year, and others around me who are also believing that, we were maybe a little more lenient going in there, going, well, the students are owning it because they're sitting there nice and quietly, and they're listening to the teacher. Well, that wasn't really ownership. And as we learned more throughout and understood that ownership is really when the student is doing most of the work, not the teacher doing most of that work, and really owning it and being able to talk mathematically about what was happening, our, maybe our looking at the classroom, I think we were a little bit more precise about what student ownership actually was. And that was one of the explanations, anyway. I believe that as we continue year after year, you're going to see those improving, and that little bit there might have been a little bit of learning on the observer's part as well. Yeah.
Now, I understand all your graphs a lot better on that page just from hearing you talk about them. I did want to follow up with Ben's question.
Sure.
I thought it was a great question. And so I know the MCAs can only measure so much. And we have all of these other areas. Are you actively going to the gym teacher and the art teacher and the, you know, social study, whatever other teachers there are, and saying, how are you going to determine 80% of, what your goals are and 80% of the kids meet them?
Well, part of the, well, what I would, what I would say to that is during that PLC time, that is a collaborative time, this will be one of the key things that all PLCs will be considering. And that's exciting because it'll be across the district. Everyone's thinking about what would 80% look like. It's possible that art teachers in the elementary school would be talking to art teachers in the high school, and maybe together, they would figure something out as to what that would look like. It's also possible that as an elementary group, they would figure out what their curriculum-based measures might be to say, hey, did we meet this 80% or did we not meet this 80%? So there's real opportunity, and we are at the beginning of this. But I'm excited because I think, I think staff can see real possibility in getting there, even though right now, you know, it feels like we've got a gap going there. But when you say 80%, not 100% of every you say eighty percent, not one hundred percent of every student is going to achieve, it feels real doable.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Question, comment? Jenny?
It's Claudia. I had a question regarding the goal number one, under the action steps. How are the individual student needs identified in that area?
On goal number one?
Yes, under the action steps.
Oh, under the action steps. Well, the individual student needs are oftentimes either brought forth by an individual teacher because of maybe a curriculum-based measure that has taken place and maybe that student didn't do very well. If that teacher brings that information forward, the problem-solving team will take a look at that and say, you know, if this is one measure we're looking at, you know, are there other things? And we'll come up with a plan together, ask some questions as to why that might happen. Other places that we see, we, that this could happen at is at the MTSS School Leadership Team. We screen the data to make sure that every student that falls below a certain threshold is receiving some sort of intervention or service that could, that could support them. And then those people are also around the table. So we can ask, you know, are, are the interventions that you're doing, can you show, you know, the progress that's being made or should we change course on that? Did I answer your question?
Yes. That's a, that's a big process. So
Yeah.
My next question is, does that process take place on a weekly basis or quarterly? Or is it just as needed?
Our problem-solving team meets weekly unless we need to meet twice a week. So every Tuesday morning, we gather around. We have a student that we're, that we're maybe wondering about or concerned about, and we'll have that conversation, getting to the why and then what's next and where should we go from there. If we have more students that need help, we'll meet again on Friday. The MTSS School Leadership Team, last year, we met twice a month for one hour. The team decided that they thought they would be more efficient if we could meet for an hour and a half. Just as we started to get going, we were stopping. So we're meeting for an hour and a half one time per month, and we're going to try that to see if that gets to the core of what we need to do as well. Yes.
Hi, Tanya.
Hi.
I know last year was a whirlwind for you stepping into this role.
Sure was.
Congratulations on shedding the interim title.
Thank you.
I know you had been in that building for a number of years, and I'm hoping that means you have a lot of great relationships there. I wanted to hear more about the Bridges Math Program and how that was received by staff. You heard about student experience a lot. I want to hear what feedback you received at the end of the year. I know there's growing pains. I know there's some good stuff, probably some challenges to overcome, but just kind of your take on what you heard from your staff last year about that implementation.
Right. Thank you for asking that. At the, in the midst of it, I would hear, wow, this is a lot of work. At the end of the year, I heard, wow, it was worth it. And maybe not every single person, every single day, but that would be by far the general response at Spring Creek. I believe we had great support. I, I think that teachers are, are believing in it. I, when Matt was talking about that perfectionist piece, it's really hard to implement a new math curriculum where you, where you're not sure of every move that it's, that you're going to make. We have a, going into the second year, having teachers in that position where they get to like tweak that a little bit, I just sensed so much comfort coming into the year, still knowing we're not there yet. I mean, it takes a bit, but realizing what's coming your way and what the questions might be so you can start figuring out what those responses could be so that we can just elevate that. There were a few pieces that the math work team, we just heard a report from them this morning, and they worked through the feedback that teachers gave. And over the summer, we made a couple of tweaks to, you know, to what the guidance might be on the different parts of the curriculum. And from what I could see, people were like very appreciative of being heard and then being able to thoughtfully make some decisions about that over in those summer work teams. So that's my sense.
Anyone else have any comment, question? Very good. Thank you, Tanya. I appreciate you.
Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate all that you do as well. Thank you.
Okay, we're on to item C, which is the superintendent's twenty-five, twenty-six focus areas. These are just a draft, so we'll have some discussion as well.
Well, good evening again, board members. It's always a pleasure to propose to you the focus areas for the upcoming year. And what you have in front of you are five areas that we would focus on from the superintendent's office over the next year. I'll briefly recap each one and then take your questions. So one of the things I've learned in my tenth year of doing this is that there are going to be some focus areas that need to stretch across years. In fact, there's a couple of them even here tonight that I will share with you, I think would likely stretch across years. So the first one is an extension of something that we had put forth last year. This year, I've added that we would a very specific timeframe for twenty-six, twenty-seven. This is around prioritizing career and technical education to develop a school-to-work program for general education high school students, beginning with the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. We have long had a program for students receiving special education services. And as we increase the capacity of our teachers who, moving to two teachers who have this license, one of whom taught the special education school-to-work program and did not have the capacity to be able to add general education. We have another teacher who's either very close or has finished that license this summer and looking ahead to how do we get that program in the, first of all, develop the partnerships, develop the skill and the capacity and have it as a registration option for students in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Do you remember last year, we made a lot of headway in terms of relationships with the Workforce Center and the Chamber of Commerce? So we really look forward to being able to deliver on that for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. The second area is one that I will be very frank with you, is going to be a little bit more difficult to report than some other focus areas that I've had over the years. And this is really about shepherding the district through our adaptation, resulting from the district's priority-based budget reductions last year. We will acknowledge those reductions. We lean into the brutal facts that are ahead of us, and then we point to a brighter future. So we have work to do. We have a lot of things that we have to accomplish. Yes, we are doing it with fewer people. And when you have system adaptation, we need to determine what are there things that we were doing before that we just no longer have the ability to do? Are we able to streamline things so that we can be more efficient, which goes in one of my other focus areas for later? But I think that in all systems, when you have a set of reductions, adapting to what the new reality is is really important. And so there are going to be some qualitative tools, and I'll be able to report that to you, things like you heard about leader rounding from Aaron. We conduct leader rounding throughout the district, typically in October, other kinds of survey results, and really just trying to keep a pulse on where our staff at as we adapt to the new reality that we have. We want to be really clear, we're not, you know, we're not going to live in sorrow or feeling sorry for ourselves. We are snapping and moving forward, but we have to acknowledge where we are, where we've been, and then move the system toward a more efficient and leaner system as we move ahead. We are not giving up, obviously, on all of the things that we've committed, but we're going to have to do it differently. So I know that that's not a specific SMART goal kind of thing, but what I'm going to tell you is having a long time of successfully leading high-quality culture, I can tell you this is really important and it's the floor of a lot of the other things that we need to accomplish. So I'm, I'm a little, I don't have, I won't have the numbers like I normally have on other things, but I can tell you thirty-one years of experience in this tells me that this is really critical. Another one would be thinking about innovation by planning and executing the first Norfield School District Artificial Intelligence Development Academy. We're taking two previous successful strategies that we used. So last year, we had a, what I would consider a wildly successful Norfield Leadership Development Academy, over thirty people who participated in that twenty-hour program, learning about the leadership tools that we use here in the district. So looking at that same kind of academy cohort model, and then digging way back when, when we used to have something that were called Tech Champs. So people who'd have been in the district for a long time would remember this. So when we were moving to having every teacher have computers and when computers and the internet really first starting to become commonplace, each building had a couple of teachers who are identified as, they were going to come and get additional training. They got a little bit of additional hardware. They got a laptop versus a desktop. And then they would come to training, and then they would go back to their school, and they would teach the other people around them how to use these computing devices that were at that time pretty new. So again, looking at up to twenty people who could participate in this throughout the district, not just teachers, but other staff members as well because artificial intelligence, generative AI, the quickest way to using it successfully, we think, might be in a lot of our back office functions. So thinking about anything that can be, a lot of tools that we think could be automated, but we need to figure out how do we do that to make the people who we have more efficient? And then obviously, in the classroom, for the students who we are preparing for success, right, for lifelong success, generative AI is going to be part of their life, right? It's gonna, AI is not going to replace people, right? But people who now know how to use AI are likely going to be much more competitive in the job market. So we think it's a really essential piece in developing the skill and the capacity within people within the district, starting with twenty people for a variety of different reasons. But again, trying to get a group of people who can help the people around them successfully understand, how do we take AI from something that many people are concerned about? And acknowledge that and honor that, the ethics portion of it, but also turn it into a strategic advantage for the school district. So we have allowed some other districts to go with this first because this is such a quickly changing environment, but we feel now is the time to be able to move ahead. We all know that the primary reason for our budget challenges is declining enrollment. And we've heard again tonight from Erin Bailey, a report that you've heard for years, where waiting lists in every single program, we're hearing how the lower birth rate is starting to impact at the NCEC. So I just, I, I cannot continue just to say, well, it's declining enrollment and not do something about it, right? That would be disingenuous. And so we have thought about marketing. We've talked about different kinds of marketing campaigns around open enrollment, but we know that there's some limitations to that in our geographic area. We're not a district in a metropolitan area where there's ten districts around us within fifteen miles, right? Just being a little bit more rural, that can be more of a challenge. Not, we're not saying we're not doing that. It's just we think that there's some other ways that we might be able to get at this more quickly. And so one of the things is that we are going to do, I'm proposing that I would lead in an enrollment study. This is not a demographic study, I want to be really clear, right? So what we would be doing is we'd be looking at the families from outside of the district who choose to open enroll to Norfield. Now, when they submit their forms, when I sign their forms, sometimes they'll have a reason written on the page, but it's not, you know, usually in-depth. So we'd like to learn why, for example, do over four hundred, at least over four hundred people choose to come to this district from other districts? What can we learn from that? Are there things that we can learn from that that we could use again in that marketing component? And then, being a district that has long been committed to public school choice, I believe we are the last charter school authorizer, public school charter school authorizer in the state. There were three of us a few years ago, it went down to two recently, and I think we are the final one. I want to be really clear, you know, we support Prairie Creek and Arcadia. We've long been strategic partners. But understanding for the students who choose something else, whether that be a charter, whether that be a private, whether that be another public school district, an online program, what do those places that people are going to offer that parents feel is different or better than what we offer? So to accomplish this, it will be a multi, multi-component approach. It will obviously include, I really want to do some focus groups because I think that's the best way to get lots of information. You can ask follow-up questions. That's time-intensive, right? We also know that not everyone will reply to a survey, right? So how can we get a survey with a critical enough of mass of people where we can make sense from the data? So still developing that, but I think that we owe it to the community to say, okay, we can't just keep saying declining enrollment. It's true, right? That is true. We don't control the birth rate. We don't control the housing market. But we can control looking at the students who are coming in and going out and trying to make some sense of that. I think lots of people have perceptions. I think there's a lot of perceptions. Let's find out what is reality versus perception. I will tell you, we might do this and there might not be any actionable data, right? That's the risk you run when you're looking at, but at least we'll know that. And I think it's something important and shows the community that we aren't just saying declining enrollment over and over again. So I think that there could be something learned from that. And then our final goal is, this is a goal that we've had for several years now as well, really just inviting all parents to come in and to help seek feedback about how we can continue to improve the experiences for our BIPOC communities, students from traditionally marginalized demographic groups. We know that that feeling of belonging is so important. We talk about the achievement gap. We really need to keep working on this. It's not something that we have come close to solving. I'm disappointed with the lack of progress that we've made, not for a lot of effort, but we need to keep leaning in and making sure that we understand what are those things that we can do to support our families so that we can really achieve our vision of preparing every student for lifelong success. And then the footnote at the bottom, I also just reminded people, we're also building a building. So that will also take some time as well. So those are the proposed focus areas for the, of course, I serve at the pleasure of the board. If you would like to suggest something else, or would you let me to drop something, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Kellman. And this will be an item for action at our next board meeting. So I want to get feedback now. Anyone want to, okay, Amy?
Well, five focus areas is a lot. Everybody, all the official groups say two to three is what you should look at. But that being said, I've been on this board in my ninth year now, and you've been here the whole time. And I've seen you do five before, and I know you work very hard. So, and I appreciate your dedication, and I thank you for your dedication to the district. That being said, I have an area that I think has been overlooked that I would like you to consider as a focus area and possibly eliminating one of the other ones for that. It's been something we, when I first joined the board back in 2017, we did a lot of research into it. There was a committee involved. We had a lot of board discussions, and that was for the later start time for the schools. And we had a few barriers to it at that point, and I think a number of those barriers have naturally dissolved over time. And I think it's time that we look back at the idea of a later start seriously. And I think this could be a two-year goal, but a first goal, first year would be spending the time to look at it again, look at where we left off last time, compare ourselves to other schools, many of whom have changed their start times, and see if we can make it work this time around. And if at the end of the year, the board votes to proceed with a later start time, then I think we would have a year to implement it, and that would be a two-year goal. So the earliest I see a later start time happening would be fall of twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-seven. And sort of was always told that as new high school got reimagined, that would be the time that this could happen, and we're here now. So I just want to throw that out there, see what else the board says, if anybody agrees with me. But I think it's really important that we sort of get back on that horse and see if we can take it to the later start time.
Anyone comment, questions? Okay, Jenny?
Thanks, Claudia. Regarding the work to, our school-to-work program, when would those materials be available to the high school students? Because I know it seems like a long ways away, but their registration is early February, and it's a very demanding deadline. And so I'm just wondering when that materials or information would be available to them.
Yeah, good question, Jenny. So I think the key part would be, it would have to be well in advance of the, of the course catalog being published, right? It would be, the materials would be part of the course catalog. So I'd have to look at how much time students have between the time they receive the course catalog and when they actually register. I haven't seen that timeframe in a little bit, so I'll have to do some research on that. I know it's not, you know, get it this week and submit it the next week. So I think that would be the absolute drop dead date, right, would be, it has to obviously be in the course catalog for next year. The goal would be, my goal would be to have those materials ready late November, early December, because the course catalog, I don't believe, is usually published until January, if I'm remembering correctly. Now, that could change this year, so we'll work with the high school to adjust, to make sure students understand what they're signing up for and what would be expected of them.
Right. The reason that I kind of point that out is just because it is new and family, you know, parents and students wouldn't have had any previous siblings, you know, that would have gone through it where they can identify, oh, that's something I wanted, I will want to do in the future, such as our other classes that we've had for many years. So.
And you know, I think our history And you know, I think our history, we have kind of a feast or famine sometimes with new courses, right? Sometimes there are new courses that, you know, take off and there's a tremendous amount of students who. Want to enroll in them right away and others take a little bit more time, right? Some take a little time to germinate and develop because people don't have as much of a background in it, so. Our goal would be to obviously have as many students who want to participate, be able to be supported in that first year. I also anticipate, I think you're right, this is very different than reading about a class and saying. Oh, this sounds very interesting, baking and pastries is something I should take, right? Where this, I think it's going to take, it might take a little bit longer to be able to have students understand, oh. I can be assigned to a workplace, it might be a workplace that I already work at. And then by connecting, right, to what I'm doing in the workplace, to the academic components of school to work. I'm able to get credit as well, so. I, I don't know where it will land, right, but the fact will be it's going to take some time to be able to determine. What is the best way to give students that experience so they know what they're signing up for? And that they can be successful, and I think that's the other important part.
Okay, well, thank you for taking the bull by the horns with that. You made a tremendous amount of progress on that in a very little amount of time, I think, for the. You know, seriousness that it entails. And then I also had a question regarding the AI Development Academy. Who, who would be leading that? Would it be internal staff or outside source?
Think you're looking at the person that's going to lead it. So the good news about that is that unlike the Leadership Development Academy where I led and taught all of it. And invited specific guests, we are starting to cultivate. There's really a thriving AI community within our school district. So leveraging our partnerships with St. Olive and Carlton College. Also leveraging, we have a number of professionals in the, who live within the school district. Who have a number of years of experience already with generative AI, so. We have a number of people who will help us and so thinking about the content, right? There's the more general, what is artificial intelligence, right? I can see a partner, I don't have it all completely developed yet, right, but I can see one of our partners. From one of the computer science departments assisting us with that session. Talking about instruction, right, I can see myself and our instructional services team. Giving people the opportunity, we talked about student ownership with the math curriculum. We would provide student ownership for the people in the artificial intelligence development academy, so. Again, teaching them how to write prompts. That is more something that we would lean on some of our community partners with. The ethics portion of it, again, looking to the colleges to help us thinking about how does the ethics around. AI, how does that connect with other things that we've learned in the past, so. I'm very excited, I, I consider myself kind of the orchestrator of this one, not necessarily the lead teacher, but it'd be my job. To put the curriculum together to make sure that we have the people who can deliver that and then try to make it self sustaining.
And then my last question is regarding the enrollment study. Would you be then sharing those results with the school board at some point?
Absolutely, I wouldn't do it if I wasn't going to share it publicly, I think it's really important. If we ask people for their time and giving us their feedback, we deserve, they deserve to see it shared publicly. So we will share it publicly, likely in a board report, maybe we have a work session around it, I don't know the answer to that yet. But I'm not, I'm not going to invest the time, I mean, this is a pretty intensive undertaking. And I'm not going to take the time to do it if we don't at least plan as a board. And a leadership team, right, to be able to study that afterwards and may try to make collective sense of it. It's one thing for me to look at it, right? It's another thing for you from representing your constituency groups to look at it, say. What sense do I make of it, right, and then the whole point would be as a board and as a leadership team, we're able to try to make some. Identify some action steps coming out of that, now. We have to acknowledge that when we're seeking truth. The, what we find in that study, we have to recognize none of it may be actionable. Right, might not be actionable, I don't know the answer, and if that's it, we're going to have to accept that. Right, there may be a bunch of things that are actionable, right? And if there are, then how do we prioritize that? If we really believe, which we know to be true, that enrollment is that one of the number one drivers of the funding that we receive. If we have very clear parameters of things that we could do. To capture more of our own district students or encourage more. Open enrollees, I think we have a responsibility to try to at least take some initial steps toward addressing those pieces.
Thank you.
Nice, anyone else question, comment, Ben?
I just wanted to kind of follow up on Amy's comment, I think it's. A good one, and it's obviously a pressure issue, one that kind of comes up, and I assume Amy, you meant later start times for high school.
Or for the district, yeah.
Yeah, shifting start times, that's kind of what you were thinking of. I mean, it might be. Obviously, you know, it's a, it's a long list of focus areas already, but, you know, I wonder if it's even just kind of a. What's a plan for a plan look like, you know, obviously that could be a heavy lift and all the interdependencies in terms of. Even alternative schedule, right, you know, you know, what are the financial impacts, how does that affect transportation? And you start pulling on those threads and things get complicated, but. And I want to recognize that obviously our administrative capacity is a little bit less than it was in the spring after we went through our budget. Reduction exercise, all of that's, I mean, I think it's, it's something we should keep our eye on in terms of just. Having gone through the exercise and at least kind of just like with the enrollment studies, maybe there's no actionable outcomes. Maybe the community doesn't really want to lean into that, but. Creating the space for that conversation over the next couple of years is probably. Time well spent, at least from my perspective, so thank you, Amy. And I just wanted to follow up, I think one of the Leadership Academy that you had. Last year, just any reflections on that, how that went, and then do you see some cadence to that? Or is that kind of a one and done, or what does that look like?
For sure, well, it was. One of the places that I get my own professional energy is by helping develop others. And so it was in my 16 years here. It ranks right up there with some of the best work that I feel that we've done and. And the, and the data clearly says that that's true, right, so very excited about. The potential that we're unlocking in leaders. People who have maybe not, don't have positional leadership, but are clearly being leaders, and so. I, I felt and the data said that it, that it went very well and I'm really pleased, there's a few things, of course, we would do differently the next time. I, I can't, I see that you probably have to do that in a cadence of every other year. I think that if you do it every year, it will fizzle out more quickly. And so what I'm thinking through is how do we continue to use this model? Every other year, so, you know, this year might be the AI, right? And then next year would be the leadership, and then after that, who knows, right? There's going to be something that comes up that none of us even know about, right? And so leaving that space to continue to help develop our staff capacity. And really, again, with the academy model. You are having people who have an express an interest. So you're creating energy and enthusiasm for people who are excited about the particular topic. So I think that that has a positive cascading effect. As opposed to forcing a bunch of people to do something that maybe they're not as interested in. So we're just trying to help have people who gain skills and share them just through their daily activities.
All right, following up on that, the, I think that the AI Development Academy is a really great idea, a good focus area for you. I wonder if just in this chart, it might be more specific that it is for staff. Because like, there could be some confusion, someone stumbling on this board packet, finding, thinking there's going to be a student.
Great point, yep, it'll, I'll, I'll update that, thank you. I do want to emphasize one of the things of the leadership, I'm sorry. One, one of the things with the Leadership Development Academy that I think people don't realize, in that group. Of 30 some people, yes, the vast majority of them are teachers. But we had two head custodians. We had two members of our tech services team. We had an educational assistant. We had people from community education, so it was not just about teaching, right? That was the, obviously the bulk, because the most of the people, so I see the same piece with the AI component. I actually, like I said before, I think there's a number of operational areas where generative AI. Can really provide us a lot of support. Once we learn how to harness it, it is. Some of it's not quite ready for prime time yet, right, but if we are in on the ground floor, we'll be able to make those things happen.
Right, Corey.
So first, I'll just say I'm comfortable with what's proposed in front of us with the five. That we have now, I think it's a good balance of meteor pieces and pieces that are going to be ongoing, and as you said, more than one year. I have been mulling on what Amy said, you know, for the last 10 minutes, I've been thinking through it and. I don't have a specific thought on. The topic at this point, I know we've talked about in the past and I still would like to hear more information, and I do. I, I think it's a heavy lift to put into the focus area without knowing if the entire board is behind. Having that conversation, I would propose that we have a work session. And maybe the district administration staff can. Give a skeletal look of how this is operated in other districts. And then at that point, we can decide if it's something we want to consider discussing further, because. I don't, to Ben's point, there's a lot of tails to this. There's a time element of a smaller staff. That committing time without knowing if it's even something the board is interested in pursuing, I think. Would be a misstep, so I think we should have a work session to discuss this at some point in the future. Because I do want to hear more about it, I, I, I know we've talked about it, I've done a little research into the research. But I don't know enough about this, but. For us to say in two weeks that we should make that a priority for. Our superintendent for the year, I think is a little premature. But I think it is a multi-year approach and I appreciate the patience you've had over the last eight years and. Continuing to support this and I, I think it's a worthy discussion.
Anyone else comment, okay, Amy?
Well, I. Just want to say that when I was talking before, I, I didn't mention. Which of the priorities or the focus areas I thought. I would let go of in replace with the later start time, if we were to do that. I think they're all valid. But I think the, the, was it, the. Studying of the enrollment is less critical at this point because once we have. The newly reimagined high school up and running, that. There may be a lot of change in why, you know, I think we'll get more people coming to the high school. And so if we study it now. It might be really good for the younger years for elementary school, why do people choose Prairie Creek over? You know, the school district and there's at least two of us on this board who might be able to give some personal input. On that. But I, I'm not sure how valid the later, the information about. Middle school, high school would be. Once the high, the new reimagined high school is open and running. I like the idea of some sort of work session, we had so much work that we put into it back in 2017, 2018. A lot of that could be dusted out, we had, we had people come and speak to the board, we had, you know, doctor come. We were, it's very. Research all shows that a later start time is very beneficial for the students. It's very, very clear, I think no one doubted that at the end. It was just. Could we make it work with our district and some of those barriers like. The buses having to make left hand turns have now been fixed by traffic circles, you know, so. So yes, I still think it's really important. I would like to see it getting started somehow and getting, getting that process going. Because I know there's a lot of community support for that idea in, in general. School district started. Instituting later start times back in the 1990s, so we're already. 30 years past the leading edge of this and. And it's time to see if we can do it for our students. Thank you.
Hey Jeff.
I guess I would bring up to Amy's part on school starting, start times, school day. This group, maybe we haven't necessarily talked about that, but it's always been an ongoing factor, it comes up every so often. And maybe there is some, some nuances to look at and then reevaluate, so I mean, it, it's, it's an issue to, to, to look at and see if. Times are changing and if there's enough support there to make some major or minor changes, so. I mean, I think that's a point on there, but I think if you're talking about. Focus areas for, you know, the superintendent, that's kind of where we should always be focused on, that's kind of one, one. You're talking about, I think, is an issue that we should look into and as a board, if we're interested in doing that. You know, at some point, you can just bring up a motion that we do whatever we do. And, you know, move forward on it or not, so, and I think, yeah, we, we, you know, exploration and taking a look at it. What have we done in the past, what's the history of that? Moving forward, are there some positive changes that we want to implement, so, yeah, sure.
Any other comments?
Discussion, I have just a few. I really like the. Focus area where you're talking about supporting necessary systems adaptations, because to me it speaks of. Talking about the difference and not just pretending it's not there as people relearn some of the processes with. Less staff support, and so I think that's, you know, adaptation with support versus. Think or swim mentality, you are pull yourself up by your bootstraps, so I think it's very. Caring and also responsible to acknowledge that people are having to change their, their way of doing things. Also on the studying the enrollment. Understanding why families choose other districts or come into our district. What I like about that goal is that it brings that focus back on. One of the main funding sources and that is per people enrollment, and so to have you. Study to get some of that data, and I agree with Amy that things will change once the high school is up. And yet I think it'll highlight some maybe overarching. Areas that we would have solid data on and that we can move on, I'm thinking in particular. Our families moving in or moving out because of the culture that we have in this district, so that's not necessarily going to change. When we get any building or new parts of a building curriculum. Maybe families will say it's not as rigorous or it's too rigorous, and then you have some data there and then some values that this board can decide on, so if we. Come to find out, people think, you know, our district is too rigorous and we decide. But we like it at this level, we're not going to change and so, we're not going to see those families come in, so. I like that, and then I, I really, I came from a previous community and worked in a district and my kids went to. School in that district where the high schoolers started later, and so when I came here, I was. Really surprised at the way we do it here and understand everybody and all districts are different, but I also am very fond of the idea of. Changing the start time for our high schoolers. And to echo some of the things that were already said, this is a vastly different board than the time that it was first discussed with five of us. Never having engaged in that conversation. Some of us are very interested, some of us are, don't know anything about it, some of us are absolutely not interested. So I like the idea of a work session to get that going. And then like Jeff said, if there's an action that we want to take after that work session. I don't see why we couldn't ask Dr. Hillman to then begin. The process of, maybe not as a focus area, but we can figure that out. Those are my comments. And if there aren't any others, then we'll move on. Our next item is the consent agenda, as a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to that grouping. Is there anything anyone wants to pull from the consent grouping? For separate consideration. At this time. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
Moved.
By court, wait a second. Amy, thank you, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, right, motion passes. Our next item is items for individual action and we have none tonight, so we will move on to items for information. We have a construction update number 14 on the high school project, Dr. Hillman.
Yeah, so I will let the report stand, I do want to call out that we will have world architects and engineers and canutes in construction. Here at the board meeting on September 22nd, to give what I think is a really robust update. You will be seeing new drawings and you'll see renditions of what the building will, could look like, right, as they continue toward. The schematic design development completion. So it's something we're going to start rolling those images out with a core planning team on September 9th. There's going to be some opportunities for some high school staff to see those items that week of the 15th. And then on the 22nd, the board in public will get a full report, so. Really looking forward to that, excited, I've had a chance, obviously, to see some of the initial renderings and. I believe it's going to exceed your expectations.
Fabulous. Any questions on this item, questions or comments? Next is our staff breakfast and program, we will welcome staff back for the 25, 26 school year on Tuesday, tomorrow, August 26. 7 to 10 a.m. at the middle school and the board is invited to join.
Our future meetings are Monday, September 8 and 22nd, 6 p.m. in this boardroom and also Tuesday, October 14, 6 p.m. It's a regular board meeting in this boardroom, Monday, October 13th is Indigenous Peoples' Day. That is all the business that we have tonight, do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, by Jeff, thank you, second.
Second by Jenny, thank you, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, motion passes for adjourned.